And so you get all ready and you go out and hunt and then you, you know, at the end of the day you pour right back into the garage.
Yeah, that's definitely not.
Moms, moms got toddies already on the table, ready.
That's not how I don't move something up. Well, this one should be a lot easier than the KU trip.
That was like, it was brutal.
Exactly.
And then you get like in the one evening day early, which didn't matter.
Exactly.
You got to have it. There's different things going on.
Oh, yeah, the twenty six.
Yeah, three o'clock at the bar is the room, I guess.
Okay, so just even, even in that bay staying on anchor, we had to get up and move the boat several times through a dragon.
You got it down to the number.
Justin and Chelsea had a tent, a tent on land, but we were in the boat.
Uh, they're jealous of it.
I did an anchor drill this week.
You did what?
An anchor drill this week.
An anchor drill, oh, yeah.
In the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Like a fire drill where you one person gets out of the ring or just circle around the car.
Yeah.
Anchor drill.
Well, if the wind would just stay one direction, you can kind of figure it out, but it kept changing on us and it was like, what is going on?
It is way too quiet in here.
Right.
Is she not gonna make it?
She picked up a couch packet for me today. So I believe she has intended to leave.
Oh, man. She's all by herself. I guess bad forum. Call this meeting door six thirty one. Local call please.
Yeah, Beth Bennett. Here. Sean Thomas. Here. Josh Bennett.
Here.
Michael Kempnich.
Here.
Sean McKinnon. Can I just get over? Me or somebody else?
Really, it's absolutely obvious, maybe.
Yep.
Local. Oh, your smell. Thank you. All right, motion except considered in to as written. Move to, so got the conservative agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Public comment, all right. Moving on to consideration of resolution and ordinance as, pardon, seven eighty two city business license.
Move to approve ordinance seven eighty two and set the public hearing on the order for September late two thousand twenty four.
I've scratched the last half of that motion.
Oh.
It is the night.
I was gonna ask you that before the meeting, I was like.
I reused the memo.
I've got to scratch the last part of it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm on the, we were gonna set the public hearing for today, today.
So there's a motion, no second.
What was first thing?
Are, are we just talking about? Can we make any changes here? Is that what we're?
Well, you can amend any changes, but there's definitely a lot of changes that have been made on, on the original, on the original ordinance with the, this is with the business license, uh, yeah.
I, I was wondering, um. So. Will the council appoint a license inspector as a? Cause the council can s- appoint a sales tax inspector, inspector under three point zero eight one hundred. Meaning who's gonna be the person to check, do the check and balances here?
We, our staff has already been doing that.
Okay.
So that's why we incorporated this cost because we haven't incorporated any cost of all of the work on the business license. Um, as well as their quarterly, um, receipt, return receipts and stuff, so this is the, this annual hundred dollars a year for the business license. And it even goes through and says if you, less than two thousand dollars per year, you're exempt, you may be exempt, um, for other reasons. For the cost of the annual business license, if I was reading it correctly. But this is start recouping some of the funds that the staff has already been.
Okay.
Administering the program is, is an administrative function of, not necessarily council. So the, the, there's an option to appoint a sales tax inspector and code, but.
That's what I was wondering, if we appoint that person, would they be the same as the business inspector? Like change code or make that person the?
That could certainly be added to the duties of it if we appointed someone, but primarily the licensing is.
Just don't mean.
Be an administrative function for staff to maintain.
Okay. That's not my only question.
I was wondering where the, the fee of a hundred came from, just because I know that a state business license, a standard one, is about a hundred dollars as well.
Uh, that was the direction of budget committee in the council earlier this year.
And then, then the committee, we, we spoke, it's actually cheaper than our neighbor. This, this is, if we do business, you know, if we do business like I do throughout multiple communities, this is cheaper.
Right, I see that, um, but also QuoF doesn't have property tax, so they have to make it somewhere else. But I was just wondering where, cause some people would think that this isn't much, but if you have a bunch of licenses and then you have to add another hundred dollars on top of it a year. And. Uh, the way I was reading it, it was mostly to keep track of all the businesses and make sure we're taking all the sales tax we needed. So I was just wondering why it just started off as a hundred when state and stuff usually is that.
No, that's a good question. Again, that was direction of the bu- budget committee.
I just feel like they're doing us a favor by collecting sales tax and I'm not sure why we would want them to pay a hundred dollars to collect sales tax for us. It seems like it's a double. Whammy there. It seems like I, I just feel like we're gonna have businesses that aren't gonna register because of it.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was headed down this road with the, the, the person that we can elect as a board for the sales tax inspector. Is that person then gonna be the business inspector? As in changing the three point one, that's more later on in the ordinance is based that people who are not carry a self, uh. A license in the community of Craig, penalty's up to three hundred dollars a day. Um, burning out license and not be operating in the city of Craig. And for, if you're like a little small vendor, if you're going to the Zards and stuff like that, you're exempt if you're under two thousand dollars. And that was gonna be my question was, you do, you turn in your receipts quarterly. Um, I had a business, one year I did zero dollars, one year I did, you know, several thousand dollars, so how do you know when you pay your hundred dollars for, for the year? Is that something that you?
It would just be a standard, I would assume, just like a business, just like you would get with the state.
Yeah, well, it says you basically, this expires December thirty first.
Right.
So, so basically January first, you would be up there paying your hundred dollars annual fee.
But you don't know if you're gonna make any money.
But you don't know if you're gonna make any money for the.
Yeah, that's, that's like, just like with the small businesses and stuff, I feel like this is going to get catchy. And then also I just, the cost of doing business here is so high as it is that this is just another fee. And I'd really like people to stay up on their sales tax rather than.
Well, I have a suggestion, possibly if we were not interested in the fee, but wanting to have people have the bus, city of Craig business license. Um, just say that everyone is required to come fill out an application to show that you're doing business in the city of Craig. And you have to hang it in your business and just like the police do for like our alcohol licensing where they can just walk in. And look to see if yours is up to date and then at least businesses would be registering. And then there would be a fee if you didn't have it hung. And then that way we're making sure everybody's registering and we're collecting the right sales tax. And then there's only a fee if you're not following it and say like, the police come in or somebody comes in just to check your business license. And you don't have one, then you could do a penalty or a fee or a ticket or.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess what some of the members here are talking about is, is the collection of sales tax. Maybe we should just, uh, follow the code and elect a sales tax inspector. And then that person can mandate a collection.
But that's kind of where we, we came off on charging this hundred dollar fee was to start recouping, cause that's gonna take a, a position.
Yeah.
In order to, and there's already a lot of our staff occurs a lot of hours filing these, um, yearly, taking care of this, contacting businesses, um, for free. And so that's where this fee started at and then they went to, um, uh, find it, you know, to the committee and it came back as a hundred dollars. Um, if we could, you know, look at it, you know, amend it to fifty dollars or if we, if we feel like, you know, other than a hundred or, or if we don't wanna fee, I'm, I'm fine with that. But if we do appoint a, a somebody, a sales tax inspector, um, we would probably wanna look at the budget and see our, you know, or look at our staff and see who we would. Um, dub the new job title with this, you know, with the pay.
I don't think code actually says it has to be a employee.
And, and there's a difference, just so we're not confused, between a sales tax inspector and the work that our staff regularly does. In terms of following up with sales tax accounts and working through delinquencies and stuff. A sales tax inspector would be when we bring someone in or have a staff member, uh, designated. To actually do sales tax audits. And those audits would be contacting and it can be done a lot of different ways. You can do a hundred percent audit, you can do a random audit each year, you can do A to Z twenty percent every year. There's, you know, basically, there's no, it can be done anyway, but the short of it is, is that for an audit, every person who's tagged for that year to be audited. Is required to bring in their books, their sales tax returns and to spend. Two or three hours with the sales tax inspector going through those records and making sure that actual revenues match sales tax returns. That the exemptions are documented correctly and the payments were made correctly. So that's a different function than what our staff does on a day to day basis of collecting the quarterly returns and notifying people when they don't submit a return. And identifying delinquent accounts and working through those delinquent accounts. That's a completely separate process, so in terms of the business license registration. Certainly something that we could hire someone to audit, it would be different than, the method would be different than a regular sales tax audit. Because the only thing you would be auditing under the licensing would be trying to find people who aren't registered that should be. And that's a different function than sitting down with businesses and their books.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking that we should just have them register and just have a certificate printed out that they can hang up at their business, expires this day, just doing business in the city of Craig with the city of Craig stamp. And because you have to have your state of Alaska one, if you're doing food, you have your safety one hung up, alcohol, marijuana, there's ones that you have to have, like. No drinking, your employees have to wash your hands, there has to be all different signs in every kind of business. This would just be a sign so businesses are registering with us and then that way if we do have to collect, when we collect sales tax, it can compare it to the businesses that are there.
And we do.
So, so with this ordinance on here, it does state that you would be required to put your business li- in your business license up in, in your place of business. So if I'm, if I'm hearing from the council, we would basically amend this ordinance without the, taking the hundred dollar fee off. And leaving the violation of the three hundred dollars a day for not, for operating the business in.
I feel like the fees, the extra fee should be taken off, like, you know, if you wanna increase your penalties for being late or not registering, things like that is where you should increase the fees. For the people who are doing business legally and collecting sales tax at the rate we're asking, I feel like that should be, you know, not another fee for them. Increasing the fees, cause the, like you said, the delinquent, I remember what, what kind of time goes into keeping up with people who aren't paying. That's where your time is getting lost, you know, people who are submitting it, that's not a big deal, you, you know, you take it like any other payment. It's when they have to track them that you're losing your revenue.
Poor processing or small cleaning.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I remember it all too well.
And, and that essentially, so I, I would say, I, I guess to make a general comment, uh, the current code does require business registration, right? So this licensing is not a brand new section of code. It's modifying code that already says that businesses are required to get a business registration in the city of Craig. And currently it's at no cost. There are probably some holes in the code in terms of, uh, strong enforcement and some other things. But it sounds to me that at least some of the discussion that council is making is to not move forward with this ordinance. But to go back and look at the current ordinance and see if there are areas that could be changed. I think that would be easier than trying to amend an ordinance that was written specifically for a business licensing process.
Right.
Right, if, so if, um, if the council is not interested, and again, just to be clear. Both the idea of moving from registration to a license and the fee that was set were generated by the budget committee. Not by, uh, none, none of this was generated by staff. So staff can continue to work under the current code. We can certainly look at some tweaks to the code, I think there's some room that enforcement needs to be strengthened and there are a couple of things that it would be good to do. But I would look at that as amending the current code.
Right, I think you should definitely have to post it, I do post mine. Um, and I just, I think it would, if it was just a little more, um, transparent and a little more stricter on penalties, I think you would get what you're wa- wanting from this anyhow.
And, and that's already required, right? So under three oh eight one eighty, so reading the ordinance language, if something does not have a strike through or isn't bold and underlying, that's what it already says in code. So section three oh eight one eighty, as is, reads, um, certificate displayed. And item B under that says the certificate must be prominently displayed at the place of business, name of the certificate.
Right.
So again, I, I think we would really, if the council does not wanna move forward with going to a business licensing process at the cost proposed. And just wants to make some tweaks to the registration process, I think we would be better off to not adopt this ordinance.
Right.
And to go back and look at how we would change the current process. Rather than moving to a new process, there is a dollar figure attached to it, you know, because there was revenue included in the budget based on the budget committee's recommendation, about twenty thousand dollars, I think.
We have to vote it down.
So that would be, what's that?
So we have to vote this down now?
Not necessarily, just recognize that there will be a revenue shortfall because there was projected revenue that will not be realized if we don't charge for business licenses like we intended. But there, there's nothing that would have to be voted down.
Okay.
So anyway, that, if the, it kind of sounds, it's, the conversation is moving along, that, that not, the council's not, um. There's not a good consensus to move forward with changing into a licensing process and, and charging a fee. Uh, if that's the case, my recommendation would be to. Vote for, uh, to, to vote on the motion, but to vote it down, so I guess maybe that's what you're talking about. So to vote on the motion and vote, yeah, yes, yes, I was saying, and then the ordinance would fail.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor right now, so we could basically, you know. Not approve the motion.
And that's easy enough.
Well, I guess, will we go to the discussion? We'll call vote on, who wants to approve the motion since it's already on the floor.
King Bennett?
No.
Sean Thomas?
No.
Josh Bennett?
No.
Michael Kempnich?
No.
Sean McKinnon?
No.
All right, motion fails. Motion fails.
I definitely think that you should go back through and increase some of the fees and whatnot.
Yeah, that's where some holes are, is like in the penalties and enforcement, so I'll sit down with Kimber and we'll look at the existing registration process. And, uh, bring a new ordinance back to the council with some changes that we see that should be made to that process.
All right, I guess, moving on to unfinished business, school capital project funding.
Mr. Mayor, there's no motion, no action required, in fact, the discussion is complicated. And all of the proposed motions or proposed solutions would take some different action by the council. So I think it would be a lot easier for the council to have a discussion tonight. And, um, really the goal would be, uh, two things, um, the first is to determine whether or not. Or how much the city wants to participate in the capital, uh, project match. And, uh, Jackie provided a letter, um, talking about the breakdown and, and the cost. Um, overall, as I stated in memo, it's a good project, it's good money, um, it's not, uh, it's a low match, real, to be honest. Uh, it's number one on the state's major maintenance projects under the ma- major maintenance program for deed. Uh, if we walk away from the grant, it's a long time before that happens again, so. But that's the first decision that the council needs to kind of discuss, is whether or not the council wants the city. Or how much of that match the, the council is comfortable with the city covering. Uh, the second discussion and maybe more, the more important one is the council needs to look at where that money would come from. And obviously, um, is the, as the memo outlines, um. I tried to include a discussion about where the operations money, the local contribution comes from, so that we don't get confused. And it seemed like the last time we discussed this, we were kind of double counting money. We were counting money and saying, well, we could use this money as part of the capital match. But the fact is, is that money's already fully committed for the co- local contribution, right? So there's a discussion about where our local contribution comes from. And starting at the, for the bottom of page two, um, there's really four options for the council to look at, as I see it. And as where the money will come from and they all have good and, well, I won't say they all have good, they all have bad. Um, and, but they're, but they're different, uh, they have different effects. So the first option, of course, is, as the council knows, there's about three million dollars in the school reserve. After we make the second half of the school's con- local contribution payment, which is usually made in January, February. Um, it'll, the account will drop to two point seven, two point eight million dollars. So a draw of the full one point eight million dollars will likely draw it below a million dollars. There's no revenue stream going into that account. The SRS payments are not high enough that there's any excess left over right now, right now, the excess, or all of the SRS payment goes towards the local contribution. So as we draw that reserve account down, there is no money coming back into it. Right, so that would leave, um, just under a million dollars and there are a lot of questions for the next couple of years, right? The sales tax is a question still, not an answer. Um, and the state's position on school funding, starting, or for FY twenty six, we won't even know until after all of the budgets are done, right? We won't even know until next July when the governor has to sign the budget. And so any discussion, this year the council approved a draw of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In addition to the money we, the other money that we're putting towards the local contribution. If a similar situation comes up next year where there's no more sales tax money and the state doesn't come through with additional school funding. In order to keep the school district at the level we funded this year, we would have to draw eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the, um, out of the reserve. Which would be pretty much all of it, right? There, there, so after next year, that means there would not be any reserve left for capital projects or to supplement operational funding in FY twenty seven. And that's worst case, right? And I'll admit, that's worst case, that's saying the sales tax doesn't pass, the, the legislature doesn't add any money or the governor vetoes whatever money that the legislature adds, right? And I hope that there's some, that, we don't see the worst case. But the worst case would be if we draw the one point eight million dollars from the school reserve, we can cover most of what we covered this year, next year. And the year after that, if nothing changes, the school contribution drops by about a million dollars. So that's the first, um, option for where the money could come from. Uh, the second one is the city capital reserve. A few years ago, we rounded up money that we had in various investments. Savings accounts, put them into one earning account with Alaska permanent capital management. It's invested fairly conservatively, it generates about, uh, three to five percent of growth. On the two million dollars, which is nice, cause that gives us an extra fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year to use on city capital projects. This is the fund that we. Uh, this is the fund that we draw, so we have some money that gets generated each year. The four percent draw from the endowment fund, um, if the, the Silver Bay lease is more than we put in the budget. Uh, the excess goes towards capital projects and if a raw fish tax exceeds what is in the budget, that money goes towards capital projects. Uh, this year that totaled about seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood, right? And on top of that, the council, the budget committee in the council approved a draw of up to two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. In addition to that money, just to cover the capital projects that the department managers brought to the budget process this year. So about one point two million dollars in capital projects. So, um, significantly drawing from the city's capital reserve, uh, first off, about seven hundred thousand of it is earmarked in the land development fund. So there's only about one, a little over two million dollars available to draw. Drawing the one point eight million dollars from that fund would, um, cut city department capital projects next year by four hundred thousand dollars or so. Right, it would also eliminate or completely draw down any growth, significant growth from the account that we're using right now to also do capital projects. Um, in addition to the normal annual capital projects that this fund provides for, every time we come to the council and say. The compressor at the ice house blew up or a pump at the water treatment plant blew up and we need forty thousand dollars to fix it. This is the fund that we go to, to draw that money, right? So we have, for our city capital needs, our emergency needs, we have a, a fairly significant amount of money that we can draw from. A, a one point eight million dollar draw of that would not only have an effect on the annual, the regular capital budgeting process. But we would have to likely cut the city's capital project even further to make sure to maintain an emergency account. Uh, the third option is the endowment fund. And, um, the endowment fund has been around for a long time, right? We've grown the endowment fund from five or six million dollars to, uh, sits at about seventeen million dollars now. Uh, the biggest, uh, the big, the biggest thing with the endowment fund is, uh, the intent of the endowment fund by the council when it was established. Was that it was established as a permanent fund, right? And so we've only, uh, generally only had access to a specific amount of earnings that's defined in code. Requires a unanimous vote of the council to open that account and draw any from, that's in code, the, the council has to vote unanimously. Um, so you could pull money from that, uh, it would have an effect on city capital projects, as I've said, that's one of the areas that we dedicate towards city capital funding each year. Um, we have, just like the, just like the permanent fund dividends, we have a formula that we use the five year rolling average of the account. And we're allowed to draw four percent of that five year rolling average. Uh, this year, um. This year, I think the number's about $580,000, right? So, it'd take a smarter person than I to sit down and figure the numbers in my head. But each draw that we make on that account reduces the overall value, and eventually that catches up in that five-year average. So that doesn't have as immediate, a drastic effect on capital projects for the city, but it will have an effect in the long term, right? And again, it will also require a unanimous vote of the council. The fourth, the fourth area that really is available to the city would be, and it's been talked about a little bit, I think some council members are in favor, some are not. And that would be to go through the general obligation bond process. And so, that's not a short process. We're probably looking at, if the council gives direction and starts approving things to issue a GO bond, you're looking generally at 18 to 24 months. And one of the things that has to happen is the voters have to approve the issuance of the bond. One of the most time-consuming parts is that this would be a tiny bond. In, in the bond, in the bond world, anything under 30 or 40 million dollars is a very small bond. And so even when we get all the way through our process, we can't just issue the 1.8 million dollars in bonds. We have to wait until the bond bank puts a bunch of 1.8 million dollar projects together and issues one bond for 30 or 40 million dollars that includes multiple projects, right? So we're kind of, that's where the long timeframe comes from. There's a long legal process, has to go on ballot, has to go to the bond bank. They're mostly in New York City. It has to wait until there's a collection of bonds. But it is an option that doesn't have strong immediate effects. The, the payment on a GO bond for 1.8 million dollars will be about $104,000, $105,000 a year for the next 20 years. So that would be obviously an impact because there's no other source of revenue for that money readily apparent. So we would subtract $104,000 from city capital projects, and we would draw it from the same funds that we would use for other city capital projects, right? But, but bonding, issuing a GO bond is an option. Beyond that, there are no pots of money. There's no other significant pots of money sitting around that the city has access to in order to make this. So really, if the council decides that, that we want to move forward with this, which like I say, is not, it's not a bad idea. I mean, it's, it's like a lot of other things that we've seen. It's money that is difficult to get, we're not going to see again. It's a project that's sorely needed. But obviously, there's impacts to wherever we draw that money from. So if the council is really looking to move forward with making that match for the school district, then we need to start talking about where that money would come from. And all of those options would likely require some further action by the council. As I said, there are two funding variables. The first is the sales tax issue that's on the ballot for October. Our calculations right now, if the sales tax passes, it'll generate about another $770,000 a year, give or take, in sales tax that would be used for school district funding. So there's a number of combinations. If sales tax passes, and the state doesn't give any more funding to the school next year, that would leave about a $300,000 hole, I think. $360,000 less next year than this year for the local effort. And no money would be available for more capital projects, right? There wouldn't be any excess money for capital projects. If the sales tax does not pass, and the, the, the school funding, no, the state doesn't approve any other school funding, again, it'll be about $700,000 less. So there's, the, the only really good, the, the only real good answer is that both the sales tax proposition pass and the legislature pass either one-time or formula funding of at least another $680 per student, which would result in about $670,000 to the district. That would actually create enough to fund the school fully at the level we funded this year and have a couple hundred thousand dollars that could be put either back into the school reserve or used immediately for capital projects.
What's the timeframe of the maybe awardness, this grant?
Yeah, how much time do we have left?
Yeah, I mean, because, because obviously, like a bond isn't, isn't going to work if it's, you know, up to two years out. We understand that we, you know, we've never, we've never been able to fund the school like we are planning on doing it this year long-term, we knew the funds weren't there. But this, you know, looking at the capital project side of things, what is like maybe the date they may award us?
I haven't signed for the supplemental funding because I didn't want to sign if we can't commit to the participating share. They told me at the state that we have five years.
Five years.
Where I get worried about that is I'm like, is that five years for the supplemental funding? Or is that five years from the original amount they have? I think it's from the original amount, when the original amount was awarded, because it's supplemental. So you're looking at three and a half to four years.
So if you sign this like today, where, where would they be allocating the funds for this project? Because if we wait another four or five years, it's going to cost, this isn't going to be a 13 million dollar project, it's going to be a 20 million dollar project.
Easily.
Well, and that's the whole thing, if the, the, longer we wait, the more everything's going to cost.
Yes.
But I didn't, I, I don't want to sign, or we already signed that we had the, the first participating share was already signed off of, the 997,000. I, I didn't want to commit another to make the total of 1.8 until we kind of settled. The district doesn't have 1.8. I think I made that pretty clear at the last meeting. I'm just uncomfortable signing off on it. They said I have time. It's just a matter of how much time. We're probably looking at three to four years to accept those funds. They already gave us a payout, and that's what I was trying to say at the last meeting, was they already paid out because there was forced accounting dues for the boilers at 778,000. If for some reason, we can't do, we can't do this, we have to pay back the 778 and anything that's, you know, we have to give it all back. Which, whatever, we'll, we'll figure it out. But I, I didn't want to sign if they, I've gotten four emails from the department to sign the document for the supplemental funding. They want me to sign. Like, they're constantly like sending it out, and I keep calling the head guy. His name's Michael Butifor at the state, new this year. He's the head of the maintenance and the facilities department. And I'm like, how, how long do I have? Because you keep giving me this. Like, I got to do it ASAP, ASAP. And I said, I just, I'm not comfortable until we settle a couple of things here. And he said, you know, five years, but he goes, this is two projects combined in one. So you're looking more like three and a half to four years.
We, we talked about the school reserve fund, the two million that we have left in the five or 2.8, whatever it is. We, we talked about being able to replenish that with tax dollars increase that the BSA does. It could take a couple of years to, to start replenishing that fund, but it would be an opportunity, talking with the legislature. It was like, it is go time on this through the legislature to, to get the school rehab to Craig. And we can't afford, we got people knocking on your door to sign it. We, the city, need to figure out how we're going to fund it, so.
Mr. Mayor, what does FY '25 and '26 look like when we can only give you $200,000?
If, say that again, FY '25.
I think it's '25 or '26, we would be, only be able to give you 200K. What does that look like for the school?
It'd be 200K extra from 600,000, that'd be.
So that's not, so there's a local contribution that's allowed? So you're talking on top of fulfilling the local contribution?
Well, at some point, the, the pot's going to be drained. I just want to know what it's going to look like when we can't, we can barely give you anything. If, if hypothetical sales tax doesn't go through, I'm not even considering that because it's not, it's not today. What does that look like for the school?
It's, it's going to be tough. I mean, I'm really trying to get the budget under control, but it is not pretty. We just got, I just talked to the board last night. There was a select grant that we partnered with, with Klock. I don't know if there, if anybody, any of the council members walked into the school and saw the new furniture. So this was like a grant that was provided for social emotional learning, brightening up the space, making it a welcoming environment. We don't manage the grant. Klock manages the grant. And I got an email from Jim Holley to me and Southeast Island School District Ron Morrison saying, I'm going to go through things with a fine-tooth comb, but I don't think there's any more money left. So he goes, we're, we're going to kind of try to figure it out and see if we can allocate stuff to you, but it doesn't look like there's any funding left. And so, as of last night, we had another 30,000 that I have to find in the budget somewhere because it doesn't sound like there's any more grant funding that was promised. It was kind of like, you, you'll have this much money. And then something happened somewhere along the lines, budgeting or whatever, invoices. I mean, there's just, there's so many moving pieces. And, you know, Jim said, I'll, I'll go through it and see what we can do, but there's no more funding. And then we had stuff that was just outright denied, that was not covered at all. So I'm trying to figure out how to pay for, for that stuff. I, I mean, it's tough right now. I'm going through and I'm revising every line item. So last year, when you, when the council was in the work sessions, those, every account has a budget code. And I already cut like supplies because our insurance went up. So our insurance went up 27%. It went from 203,000 last year to 263,000 this year. It went up $60,000. And so I already went through and I'm cutting like instructional supplies. I'm cutting things down as much as I can. There's things that I can't cut though, like the salaries are, you know, classified and certified staff are covered by the negotiated agreement, you know what I mean? They're union, and I, we have to pay them, and we have to provide benefits. There's areas where I just can't, I can't touch it. But I can tell you that we're, I'm establishing a ton of checks and balances this year that were not in place in the past. So the principals had never had a budget before. The principals have a budget. They have codes, they have a budget. It's in the new accounting system, the Tyler system, where you can click on it. You could see how much is left, what your year-to-date expenditures were, how much is pending, what the invoices are that need to be paid, and then what the uncommitted balance gives. Just to give reference, tonight I looked at one because I set it up so that the principals, so the requisitions go through to the admin assistants. They make it with the teacher or whoever's ordering. It goes to the principal. The principal provides approval. If it's $500 or more, it comes to me. So I see a lot of them. And I, I'm not trying to create more work for myself, but I'm trying to see where the money's going. And so tonight, I looked at one. The overall budget for the school was, for supplies, instructional supplies was 14,400. As of tonight, if this purchase requisition goes through for legitimate educational need, SIEXCEL, which is a program that we use, you know, to supplement our math and our English and language arts, they're going to have 3,500 left. And I'm like, here we are. It's September 19th. And granted, we front-load. We're buying everything for the year. This is a year charge, you know what I mean? But I have made it really clear to the principals and the staff that we have to stay in budget this year. You have to stay in those line items. We're, I turn off the lights every night. It's ridiculous. But I sent out an email and I said, I want to see if we all take, you know, do our part and turn the lights off. You know what I mean? I want to compare last September to this September, last October to this October, and see if it makes a difference. So when I leave, I go through and I turn the lights off. I have the maintenance department turning, the custodians, I'm like, just turn on the lights when you're working. The rooms that you're working in, turn on those lights, the heat. I just heard from my maintenance director that we got to fill up the high school. We need to fill up 2,300 gallons of stove oil at $4.26 a gallon. I'm like, oh, that's a $10,000 bill. Why aren't we filling it up in September? Was it on all summer? I, these are the questions I'm asking, like, why was it on? You know, if, if it was on, is this a normal thing? Do we always fill it up in September? So I'm asking a lot of questions. I'm concerned with the expenditures. I'm trying to put checks and balances in place. The PACE, our homeschool correspondence school, there's things that I went through with the PACE staff on how we process things. So I'm really trying to get it under control on top of trying to deal with the fact that the capital project funds, a lot of the reasons why there's not money in there is it was used as a slush fund to just supplement the general budget. 500,000 before me was taken out. And on July 10th, my business manager said, Jackie, I need another 100,000 to make payroll, to make payroll. I'm like, what do you mean? And so, I brought it up to the board. I said, this is where this transaction came out, this came out, this came out. So 600,000 had come out. I'm trying to put that money back into the capital projects account because to me, that was money that should have never been taken out and consumed by the general budget. We have to cut in other ways. I'm really trying to get it under control. I go through, it's like, I'm, every day, every night, I'm looking at the budget, trying to figure out how to make everything meet. And I don't want to come off like I'm upset at any one department or any one person. I know that it's the state. The state's not funding education, you know what I mean?
The state is, they're suing the feds now.
Yes. And so it's just, I, I, I understand that, that it's not any one department or any one person. We need the state to fund education. And that's where I like joined a superintendent meeting today, you know what I mean? And I'm advocating and testifying and saying that these are the things we need. And cutting, you know, our costs too with travel. Like, I attended via Zoom today, and another board meeting last week. I attended for two and a half days last week because I didn't want to spend the funds to go to Juneau or to go to Anchorage. You know, there's a big superintendent conference next week at Anchorage. And then I have a special ed director conference the week after. And they're kind of getting grumpy that I'm a new superintendent, not going to the Anchorage superintendent conference. And I'm like, I'm sorry, but the compliance issues that we have with Fed top at Trumps. This is federal and state statutes. I, I need to go to the special ed director conference. We were just audited this year. There's going to be findings. So I'm picking and choosing to, on, on, on travel. PACE traveled for in-service last year. Our homeschool correspondence school traveled for in-service. They all went to Anchorage and had in-service. I said, we're not doing that this year. You serve your population virtual, and you serve your population through correspondence, you can do your in-service via correspondence. So I'm, I'm really trying to put in some, some parameters and trying to get that budget down to where it's an operating budget and is practical and is functional. But it's, it's early. It's early to, to, to tell.
And it's early.
That's why we need that, basically, the 1.8 match is because your reserves that you have is for operations right now. In order to retain the staff that they have now, they're working with a lot of less staff than they had last few years with the same amount of kids. That's going to start, you know, taking it to a, you know, we have capital projects. We have five, you know, capital projects. When I started here, the fire hall, $7 million project, we were willing to do a $2.5 million match for a $7 million fire hall. We've got $4 million allocated to us with no match. There's been match funds that we've seen coming from our water plant that ended up being 100% with 100% match. So we do have our own capital projects to worry about, but in the last year so our capital projects have come at a cost of 100% match if we just downsize from a $7 million fire hall to a $4 million fire hall. You know, so we could still potentially, and then if we decide not to touch any of our money and utilize the school's money, knowing that the way we were looking at before the $640 BSA increase or whatever it was, it, we knew it wasn't sustainable. We told the school that, you know, we're not going to be able to fund you guys $1.8 million for the next three years. So I guess, with our quest, first question to the council tonight was, what are we willing to match on the capital project? And then the second question is where the funds were coming from. I guess the first question, are we willing to match the 1838523 to, for the capital project? Because if Jackie waits any longer to sign this, they're going to start looking elsewhere to. Because if Jackie waits any longer to sign this, they're gonna start looking elsewhere to. For these funds. We're not the only school, we're just the first one on the, on the list right now.
Mr. Mayor, one more question. Do you have the numbers for when this, this project went out to bid? And what I, what I'm really interested is, you guys needed to ask for more money. And what was that percentage, meaning? If we can figure out to get you one point eight, is the bid gonna be sixteen million?
I can get them, I, I, there was, um. I know I can get them. I don't have them on me, but I know I can get them.
That's, that's my only fear.
Yeah, I've been digging for them and I haven't found them, but I know they gotta be somewhere because they're public.
Yeah.
I just can't find them.
Because I, I know there was one bidder last time.
Dawson, right.
Dawson was only one bidder and they were high. They were over what the project was being funded for.
I think even with supplemental funding.
That's, that's, and then they got the, they got more money and they, they combined the two together and now.
Interested in seeing the former, like what the bids were.
Yeah, cuz even if we can find one point eight, you might need two point four.
Well, the project might overrun to, you know, what's not shown by our job where, you know, after change orders, it overran. You know, several million dollars, but yeah. No, change orders are, but some people make their money on, it'd be nice if. Definitely see what the last overall prices were and then reach out to the state and see if there's any other available funds, if there is overtures on the project.
Yeah, I went in visit with Jackie last week and something that we talked about, but I think it's an option that might need to be considered. We're talking about a project that, you know, was proposed a few years ago, and so the cost may be considerably higher now. The other option would be, we may need to reevaluate and set a priority on what kind of work is done and, and. Bid it in stages and, you know, stage D might have to wait.
Is that possible?
What's that?
Can it, can it be split up?
Into phases?
Yeah.
Anything's possible with the right negotiator.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I would consider it. I would see if that's something that we do.
The roof is the priority, right?
But you're running into grant problems, right? Because your grant life doesn't change.
And then you run into mobilization two or three times and so on and so forth.
But, but there are other ways to do that. You, it's, you, a project like this, if, if I were putting this project out and I'm sure that we had enough money. I would probably figure out what the priorities, what the prioritize all of the parts of the project. And bid it out with several additive alternates. And so we would have a base bid of the most important work, and then at the same time, contractors would bid on also doing this, this and this. And at some point, you look at the list of extra ones and unfortunately you say, we have to draw the line here, right? So that would not be in phases, that would be one bid. But phases run, the problem is you're running.
I think she would have problems because most of it was ADA and uh, fires, ventilation. So it's very hard to piggyback unless you fulfill the first part of why you got the money on this project.
You start prioritizing, then the roofers are gonna be like, I like to spend as much as I want because you're not getting drywall next week.
Um, I think that we need to fund it. Obviously, it's our building. If the school fails, we're not gonna. What are we gonna do with that building? Just let it rot? Um, I'm really interested in three, but I don't wanna discuss it if any of the council is completely against it. Because it needs a role, uh, full goal. Yeah, unanimous, thank you. Um.
That would be a new council member.
Yeah.
We go out with a bang.
And I'll help you out and I'll just say that there is no action on the agenda tonight.
Millie's not here, you're safe.
I do know that the district and the school board, um, contracted out with Architects Alaska. To help with all of the bidding and the design services, like the kind of the. Permits bidding, like all of that. Um, so that's already been agreed upon, like that's a contract that's already in place. And I'm like, what do you mean? We haven't even started the project, but they already have secured those services through Alaska Architects. Um.
Brian, the, where we at? Number two? The capital management, management, yeah, this currently has two point nine eight million, about seven hundred thousand is designated as land development fund. Does that include the last, um. Where all the properties were sold in the last couple of years, they went into this fund? And that includes. The current property that was just sold? So there's still.
So that, that, that money hasn't been paid yet.
Understandable, but yeah.
But there could be included in this land.
Another four or whatever.
Yeah, again, that would be a council policy decision. The council's always been very careful with the land development money to treat. Land as a permanent asset.
I'm just asking because of the numbers.
Yeah, yeah, so it will be higher, um, by four hundred and sixty three thousand dollars after the CTA land sale goes through and payment is made. Um, so it'll increase the amount of the fund overall, it'll increase the amount of land, the land development fund. Like I say, it's a council policy call. The council has always treated that money as. Those, those land sales as permanent assets, so that money has always been reserved for either buying other land that the city needed. Or developing land for some economic development purpose that would return, um, you know. Um, so for example, we poked money out of it to develop a couple of residential subdivisions. Which we recouped immediately by selling lots. Uh, a few years earlier, we pulled some of the land development fund money out to, um. Do a fill project for Silver Bay to build their bunkhouse and then increase their lease fee. To pay the money back to the land development fund. So the, the, the land development fund, at least that has been the council policy in the past.
To like defeat it. So one last question and then I, I think I'm just ears for these guys. So on the, the bonding. Could we, is it an individual bond for this allocation? Or can we add a couple other things that we might need in, for capital projects here outside with the whole city?
City can go through the process of issuing a GO bond for any eligible purpose at any time. It goes through the same process. The problem with that is now two problems. One is, say we round up four million dollars of city projects that we wanna do. So now we have a six million dollar bond. The chances of a six million dollar bond for a slate of projects passing is much lower. Than a one point eight million dollar bond just for the school district project. And the second problem is, like with any other, uh, any other, um, long-term debt like that. Is if you issue another four million dollars in bonds, you now have another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In bond payments for twenty years. So now you've taken.
Twenty?
Twenty-five percent more of what we would spend in a given year on city capital projects. And are spending it to pay the bond payments.
Right.
But there's nothing that prevents the city from issuing. A GO bond for any, primarily their infrastructure type projects. Um, we've issued GO bonds in the past for reconstruction or updates to the sewer plant. Water plant. We've bonded twice for the pool, once for original construction and once for renovations about six years ago. Um, so the, the city can go out and do a GO bond or can include additional projects in a, in a larger bond.
And we could, you know, the tax rev, you know, vote does get voted in to fund the school. I hope to see that on the reader board here. Vote yes on passing this initiative and some flyers up at the post office here.
I think the school has to be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I put it up there.
Provide information, but not.
Absolutely.
It can't be a public property.
Yeah.
It'd be a great idea.
It'd be, it'd be nice to, yeah, no, but it, it, I mean, cuz if this tax initiative doesn't get voted in by the people, there's gonna be a six percent one on the tax initiative next year. Um, if we can utilize those funds on a tax initiative, pay this stuff back, listen. At some point in time, I wanna be able to tell Jackie, go ahead and sign it, we're gonna figure out how to fund it. Um, with, and I mean, it's, you know, there's no motion item on here. But I mean, I know we got a busy meeting coming up next time, but at some point in time, I'd like to be able to allocate the funds. We're gonna look at allocating the funds for the school.
Personally, I, I wouldn't have a problem taking one point four out of the SRS and taking the four hundred that's coming in the mail. For the property that was just sold and.
Well, we got five hundred and eighty thousand out of the other gender one that we go off of the four percent or whatever without, you know. That would make it one point two and take the one point two out of the.
We couldn't do that because that five hundred and eighty thousand dollars is already committed to city capital projects. So in order to do that, I would have to go to the department.
Okay, alright, alright. So it sounds like there's one option, Brian. It sounds like pulling money out of the reserves. Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, at some point in time, um, it's, you know, it's either tear the building down. Or rehab it, and then we can't say, what if there's overtures? So. Three years down the road, if there's overtures, then that's when we figure out what we do with those overtures. But at some point in time, talking to the legislature a couple of weeks ago, saying that we cannot afford to let this go, we need to be proactive now. We need to sign it, we need to come up with, if we are wel- willing to give the one point eight million dollars to the school to fund it. Um, we need to figure out how to fund it and I don't, I would really like to see that happen here by the next council meeting. Because it sounds like we come up with a, you know, a way to fund it, um, and we can always. We, we know that that slush fund for the school or reserve fund for the school wasn't gonna be there much longer if the state doesn't fund the school. Um, but that school's not gonna be here another year, um, if we don't, you know.
I mean, we're gonna feel a hit no matter where we get the money from. It's needed. And I feel like even though it's the endowment fund and we haven't touched it in a long time. But, I mean, at some point you have to kinda take some of that money if you wanna repair what you have. And keep it. You gotta spend money to make money, right?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Chanelle, it's, it's definitely a viable option, if, if, if we agree upon, on going on that route.
Right, I just feel like it would be the least amount of blowback. And less felt than any other area at the time. We take it out of the. The school, right, the school reserve, I mean, that's gonna dwindle down at some point. We're seeing it happen. We can't just rely on the state to fund schools. I mean, we're supposed to, but can you really?
You guys aren't interested in taking a percentage out of different pockets?
I'm, I'm interested.
I'm interested, that's what I, that's what I'm saying.
I, I, I would like to have a direction to where we can go sign that tomorrow and figure out where this money's coming from.
Because I, I know, I'm not comfortable saying one point nine out of endowment, but if we vote on taking nine hundred, I'm okay with that. And if we can get another, if we can get the one out of the SRS, one million, then I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, and the only reason I talk about the reserve for the school is because when we start collecting tax revenue, that tax revenue has to go back to the school. Whether it's operations or it can go back in to the building. So, um, the community wants to see these capital projects go to the community. The community needs to look in and voting. This tax increase and Klock's tax is six point five percent. Our city sales tax is still at five percent. Um, Catch Cam, Klock, everybody else in the proactive and already sitting taxing for the schools. You know, you know, an extra percentage is going to the schools in the other communities. So if our community could, you know, fight in their hearts to raise that tax increase, we can generate that revenue. We've decided that that's gonna go directly to the school and that can go back to the, you know, to, to the reserve funds i- if we would like. Um, and then of course, um, if the school, the state isn't funding the school, you know, they're in a tough spot. To where they gotta, you know, you're gonna start to start budgeting that downsizing the facilities. I mean, that was the whole part of, you know, get redoing this project is what are we gonna be left with? When the junior high shuts down and moves to the high school and the elementary, um, you know, I mean, but yeah. So I, I, I'm willing however we, however we decide to pull it out.
Same, same.
But I would love to have some, you know, direction to be like, let's get it signed and we can figure out how to. You know, get the legislature to start allocating this project.
Mike, are you comfortable taking anything out of the endowment fund?
No.
Okay, so, so then we might as well not. Yeah, right, I don't wanna.
Progress.
Yeah, so, so.
It's one cross talk.
Uh, if case, if, if we can roll the dice and I hope for the best for an election, the SRS is the easiest account. To replenish.
And if I can, um, it's also, um, so if we were to take the money. Or take some portion of the city capital reserve and then everything goes great. And the sales tax increase passes and the legislature does what it's supposed to do with school funding. We can't take any of that money and put it back into our capital fund. Because all of that money is now dedicated on the ballot, the school, the sales tax money.
Anything extra is given to the school.
Yeah, and, and any school funding that goes to the school from the legislature goes to the school.
Yeah.
So if the best scenario happens, we're still, if we draw a million dollars out of our capital fund as part of funding this project. We can't take any of that new money and replace our money. Whereas, like the mayor pointed out, with the school reserve fund, if we take the money out of the school reserve fund. And best case happens, now we're adding three hundred and some thousand dollars per year. Back into the school reserve, right?
I was really disappointed when I found it, cuz we had meetings with the school board and the last superintendent. And we were looking like they had five hundred thousand dollars sitting there.
Oh, they had one point eight.
And then, and then, yeah, and then, yeah, but I mean, at least match minimum that we were talking about. And after this last few months of meeting, I mean, start talking about grants and misallocating funds. You know, the ones that got misallocated coming out of that general, so it's, so I mean, and.
I was so, when we had those meetings, I was hoping the school could three or four hundred thousand, you know, but at this, yeah, at this point. Yeah, SRS.
You know, but yeah, cuz, cuz I was looking at, cuz they went through the budgets and they went through that, but nobody went through and seen how the grants would be administered. And that was, that, you know, that, that would have answered a lot of questions here, um, this last year when we were having meetings with the, with the school board.
And I know Jackie's talked about it a little bit, but there's still money that the school district needs to pull out of the capital fund to finish the high school biomass project.
Yeah.
And we were talking earlier this year, the schools, are all the schools on the fire plan? No, just, uh. Which, which of the schools are on the fire watch plan?
The middle school.
The elementary school is on fire. They're on a hundred percent fire watch plan and I'm trying to get a quote for the high school. We fixed the middle school. The middle school's good.
Oh, good.
Um, but, uh, I mean, for now.
Good as it's gonna be, but those, those systems are.
School, they said that the, they don't make that panel anymore and so JCI is giving me a, they're trying to put together a quote. So we can see how much the high school would, would cost because the, the elementary, middle school rehabilitation project. Will fix the fire alarm system in the elementary, middle school, but not in the high school. So I don't wanna waste the money on the elementary school. If this goes through, we're gonna rip it out anyways. I mean, they're talking anywhere from, from forty five to seventy five thousand dollars potentially. And then they're like, and we don't even know if it's that much, cuz if we get in there and there's something else wrong, they're just completely obsolete. Um, and out of date, so.
Yeah.
We, every hour, the maintenance director has to do around in the elementary school. We got an impairment plan in place, uh, everybody signed off on it that needed to, our insurance, the fire chief, I mean. And he's gotta do it, uh, every hour around and then he puts it in a logs sheet and sends it to the, the assistant, the deputy fire marshal at the state. Um, but I know it's an inconvenience, but I didn't wanna spend the money. I didn't, I just didn't wanna spend the money on it.
But the point being that there are still other capital needs at the school, right?
Yes, yes.
The high school alarm system, it cost us forty thousand dollars to redo the clinic alarm system. When it was, had to be replaced because it was obsolete. I can't, I imagine the high school system is much more, much bigger, much more.
And I, I haven't gotten a quote back from the high school. We're still looking at, at what that means, what, what that's now look like. But if we, so, um, what I'm kinda hearing is. That it would really be nice to know what the elections are gonna. that it would really be nice to know what the elections are gonna do with the sales taxes gonna go through and all go through. Um, I mean, if we went to bid, it would probably be, I would say, like November, absolute December the latest because it's gonna take time to, if there's a contractor that it's awarded to, to get the supplies here. And the idea would be to start like in May. You know what I mean? Like right when school's out, so you suck up your summertime of, you know, construction because we would have to shut the entire middle school down. And then you're, um, shuffling kids to, you know, for, for PE, we don't really have a gym. So you're, I mean, we have to put a lot of plans in place. I won't get into all the logistical detail stuff, but it would be nice to go out to bid in November, December at the absolute latest so you can get the supplies here and actually start right when school gets out.
Mike, what do you have to?
Yeah, my thought would be, I think, you know, I sense that we all feel that this has to happen. So I think that, you know, that's a given. It's how do we go about doing it? You know, I just have a strong aversion to pulling anything from the endowment fund. It's, it, it'll never go back. But I think that since we have threesome years to, you know, commit, although I understand what Jackie just said, we'd like to get this bid sooner rather than later. We wait, you know, we wait until, uh, the vote in October on our sales tax. That will indicate, you know, that will help us a lot determine on how we, how we wanna allocate funds. I see that, you know, between school reserves, and I also look at this as something we can do, as you suggested, we could do a little bit of, of school reserves and then some from the capital city. We know we have, you know, a pretty good chunk coming here shortly, uh, from a land sale. We have other potential land sales that look like they're in the works. They're not quite as big, but they're gonna, we could, you know, we could look at them as contributing to this need as well. But we would, we would have a lot more answers in about two more council meetings.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, knowing that it was like COVID when they were passing out fifteen hundred dollars and you had the business that needed twenty-five thousand dollars a month to stay in. We're looking at piece million, you're giving a hundred twenty thousand dollars out of this reserve account that we have for you guys when you guys need a million dollars a year. So realistically, when, um, whether we have this reserve account for you guys or not for the next three years, they're giving you an extra hundred fifty thousand dollars a year out of it. Um, your needs are much greater than that at this point in time, a, a million dollars a year, which, so a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year added to your budget out of this account really doesn't make up any gaps in, in your budget for the next, you know, for the next couple of years. Um, so it's either the state's either gonna fund it, um, or, you know, we fund it out of a reserve account that really giving them a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year out of it isn't doing much for the school budget for the next five or six years. The school's gonna look the exact same if we give them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the next five years or if we spend this money all tomorrow on the school. Um, because the school's at a hundred twenty thousand dollar a year, the junior high's still gonna have to shut down. The kids are gonna have to go in and you're gonna have to cut half of the staff. I mean, it's the same amount of money because a hundred twenty thousand dollars holding on to this and saying, you're gonna get your six hundred thousand dollars in property tax. You're gonna get your little bit of timber to use and here's an extra hundred twenty thousand dollars that really isn't gonna keep the lights on at the school. So, but yeah.
So I have a question on, on the revenue that we do generate for, you know, from our endowment fund. What are the present obligations that we have and what is the timeframe on when these obligations will be met? I know the pool is one.
The pool, we've got all of the heavy equipment that was bought by Public Works a few years ago. And then, and then, um, we have a couple of smaller, um, long-term water loans and a number that the city has more recently entered into, uh, for water and sewer projects. Um, and then, but the bulk of it, probably half of it at least is simply a matter of other city capital projects like.
There's a new garbage truck coming out of this too.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, uh, but in the budget is, and we, we may not get, pay anything for a new garbage truck this year, but in the budget is eighty thousand dollars from the capital reserve. Now whether, whether you wanna say that comes from the endowment fund earnings or it comes from the capital savings account, I mean, all the money is mixed in. Once we, once we approve the capital projects, it just comes out of the big pot of money that includes all of that. So, um, you know, to take money from that, from the endowment earnings this year, you would, you, you can only take about, well, you could take whatever you wanted of it, but you would reduce real capital projects by that much. And there is a point where you do have to stop because then all we have money for is debt payments that we currently have, right? And then no capital projects. So no, no Public Works, you know, Public Works can't replace greater tires like they planned. Or buy pumps to put on the shelf. All the things that you guys have been hearing about regularly from the departments that they're working on, they would get told they couldn't do any of that this year.
What, how much do we pay each year on the, on the pool?
About a hundred thirty-five thousand.
And what's the timeframe of when that's paid off?
Twenty, uh, fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
Yeah. It's a twenty-year bond. We did the project about six years ago, as I recall. I, maybe I, I might be misremembering it, but it seems to be about six years ago. So that would put at least fourteen years on that bond, so.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, it, it seems to me out of all these options, and I think Brian had said it and Casey has said it, that no matter what, if the tax goes through the sales tax, it, the SRS account is the only one that will be able to replenish and we won't lose out by taking capital, capital funds. I, I believe that the SRS is our path.
And, and to add, add that, when, when we did, when we decided as a council to make this tax initiative go to a hundred percent to the school, we took away from our need for more capital projects. Um, and knowing, could, could, you know, I mean, for, for, for that money to generate into our fund
Yeah.
to go to a hundred percent for the school. So regardless, if we do get that, we do spend all the ca, all the reserve funds and we do get a tax increase, that's an extra seven hundred thousand dollars that's gonna go to the school operations, not onto this project.
Right.
You know, and throughout the year, we could replenish and we could do an endowment fund for the school with, with more tax money down the road.
Correct. But in order to see money go back into the reserve, the tax increase would have to pass. We'd have to see the seven or eight hundred thousand dollars revenue there. Plus, the state would have to increase the student fund a lot and see another six hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. And then you end up with about three hundred thousand dollars of surplus that can go back into the, uh, reserve. But if either of those two things fail.
That's why I asked Jackie, what does it look like?
Then there's no money to go back into the surplus. And I would, one other thing I would add, talking about pulling the money and the timing, there, there, there may be some value in waiting until we have an answer on the sales tax, but, um,
It's gonna happen anyway.
It's a moot point, right? And the sales tax, um, is not going to solve the capital problem. And, and so, uh, basically, the only decision at some point might be, if the sales tax doesn't pass, then we want to save the SRS to be able to dole it out to the school for the next ten years. But then effectively, we're saying no to the capital project.
If, if we, if we did that, no matter what, we'd give it to them anyways so they can fix the high school to accommodate all their students. And so.
Either way, we're gonna be bailing the school out of our capital reserves if, 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 if that money is gone anyways, or, you know, so I mean, we, we could exa, I mean, we, we could spend those funds with hopeful that, you know, the tax revenue, if the tax revenue doesn't get voted in this year, I would propose a six percent increase across the board next year. You know, and, and keep putting it on the ballot or, or whatever it's gonna be, you know, um, to, to keep trying to generate funds. But this is, you know.
So in short, if the council, uh, if the council is convinced, and it sounds like it, and I don't disagree with it, that, uh, providing the one point eight million dollar match is the right answer. Um, what the, what the voters do in October and even what the legislation the governor do next year, that's a problem for us to figure out with the school district a year or two years from now. If there's no other money and the reserve is gone, then we have to have a serious talk with the school about you're gonna get six hundred, seven hundred, a million dollars less this year. What's the school look like, right? I mean, that's the conversation that has to be had. Or we have to talk about, you know, what do we not do in the city of Craig, right? Do we, do we raise property tax a huge amount? Do we cut departments? Do we do something to gen, to allow for more? But those are conversations that can be had, or will, may need to be had based on future. And there's kind of a disconnect between those conversations and this capital funding conversation. So, um, I, I think that, I guess, in short, my, what I would share with the council is I don't think there's a huge drawback. If the council, uh, is, wants to make this match, again, which sounds like it does, um, there's no drawback to doing it and allowing the district to bid the job out even as early as November.
Yeah, I just see there's a sense of urgency talking to the legislature here. And I've been involved in the grant application where I was number two on the list out of fifteen.
Yeah.
Um, they've moved a, a, an emergency, a special meeting to, uh, uh, Soldotna and said, don't worry about going, you're number two on the list, you're funded. They went up and met with everybody in Soldotna and my money went somewhere else. I lost out on two point one million dollars for the Sandy Goose Creek Grove. And if we wait and we don't sign this initiative and move forward with this thirteen million, there's a thousand schools sitting in line, ready for projects, that's ready to sign that piece of paper.
Yeah, so like you said, there's, there's no, there's no immediate drawback to committing those funds, right?
So when can, when's our next meeting?
October third.
That's after the election or the night?
That is a.
That's, you will know the night of October third whether or not the sales tax initiative.
So can we have that on the agenda to pass this?
What do you want on the agenda?
A promotion item on the agenda.
No, well, I don't need a motion. I can work on that one. I'm saying, it sounds to me, and, and check me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me that the council's consensus is to draw the one point eight million dollars from the school reserve.
Uh, I just wanna throw this out there to everyone that our endowment fund does make money. It grows. And it can fail too.
Started and it's at seventeen now, so.
Throw that out. It's a good one. But, yeah.
I look at this as, you know, we know we have somewhere around close to a half million dollars coming in in land sales. One big one and one or two small ones. I would say taking five hundred thousand from our capital, city capital reserves, which basically is not gonna lower what we presently have and then take the balance from the school reserves.
I would, I can, I can do that.
If, if we have, it takes unanimous decision to pull the capital fund. So if we have a unanimous decision to pull that replenishment, then, then I think we're all in agreement.
Capital?
Right? It doesn't take. No, not the capital. Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks, Mike. Yeah, the endowment.
And, and again, I hate to keep being negative about all of it, but the council's been talking about a number of develop, land development projects
Yeah.
that it has wanted to get going. And, and the money to, for those, um, my intent, those are land development projects, right? The planning for Track B, the planning and engineering for the Canary property, those are projects that, that we would recruit through some lease process. Those are likely to get set aside or tabled until we find some other sources of money. Right? So that, that would be one drawback from drawing from the land.
Yeah. So any of these situations, if we choose that we need funding, we can get the majority vote out of the endowment of a couple hundred thousand.
No, pardon, out of the capital reserve.
I, I, I.
Not out of the.
The endowment has to be unanimous.
Unanimous, so.
No, I mean, if, if we need money, we can always go there.
If we have a unanimous vote.
Not to the endowment, no.
For what they.
If you wanna pull from that seventeen million dollar account, any money, a penny, it takes a unanimous vote of the council.
Correct. So the council would know that if we needed money for any, any situation as.
Not with the school, just any situation.
Just any situation because we, we put this money into it, then we can, we can pull it out of the endowment.
No, he incorrect. Mike's already indicated that he's correct. Would not vote for that.
Yeah, no, that, that was for the school fund, he's talking about, about different revenue. But I guess, um, on the next meeting, um, we can make a decision as council on where the money will be pulled from and allocated, to the, to the school project.
So i- if you, if, I guess what we're saying, if you can just give us two options, taking a hundred percent out of SRS or the five hundred, option B would be five hundred out of the, the, the land money that we're gonna get and the rest out of the SRS.
Yeah, I can tell you what those two options are tonight. I mean, those are the options.
I mean, to, to actually vote.
To put it on the. I don't wanna listen to all this again. Like, can we just finish it and can you explain what the outcome would be?
Well, so, and again, depending on the numbers of the council, but say you wanna take the five hundred thousand dollars, give or take from the CTA land sale and, and, uh, the APNT land sale, the, the land sale to, uh, Bob Anderson is likely cost, it's not, it's not gonna make money cuz we're asking for a bigger parcel than what we're selling to him. So assuming that there's similar value, we're gonna pay him some amount, right? We're gonna pay him the difference. But half a million dollars between the CTA land sale and the APNT land sale. So if we were to take that half a million dollars, that would leave one point three to draw from the school reserve account, right? One point three, one point four, something in there. Um, that would leave the land development fund with seven hundred thousand dollars, which would, um, which, I mean, we would use what we needed to use of it. It may or may not impact the land development projects that the council has wanted, right? Drawing one point three million from the, the school reserve um, would potentially leave one point three, something like that, one point four million in the school reserve that could be used for other capital projects or could be used to supplement operational funding for the school over the next few years. Drawing the whole one point eight from the school reserve would only leave about eight hundred thousand dollars, which would mean that supporting the schools, additional money to the school for operating costs or other capital projects wouldn't last as long.
So can we have, uh, two different motions recommended to us on the next meeting saying either pulling it out completely out of the SRS or part of it out of the endowment? Cuz then we will know if the sales tax passed and then people feel better and we'll take the endowment out because all of us aren't unanimous. We won't have the same council members on anymore. And, uh, so, yeah.
Thank you. Alright. Got it. Um, any more discussion on the council project?
Don't even ask.
Moving on to new business. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Yes. Sign that piece of paper, you're gonna get that money coming. Uh, tell, moving on to new business, teleconference, uh, participation, participation in the council meeting discussion.
Since Josh gets to.
I, hey, I, I would love everyone to have the opportunity to call in. That's all I gotta say. And once you're in that call-in center, you can't talk. For some, some reason, somehow, somewhere, all of a sudden, this thing just mutes you. I changed three headsets. I went to just my phone and I end up having to call the mayor. I, I, I was interested in, I believe you, Brian, you stated there was COVID dollars left over for, I don't know what was already spent for any Zoom platform. I don't know if what we currently have came out of the COVID funds. But I don't, does this op system need to be running with the YouTube? There's a couple of questions. Can we just move to a Zoom platform and ditch this call-in center? I know there was issues that you stated that, that.
We could never solve the microphone issue.
The school is, they're, when I go to their board meetings, their, their Zoom platform is working great. I don't, yeah, I don't.
And we, we, uh, we started during COVID with Zoom. And the problem that we ran into with a single microphone at the time was people could either hear the council or they could hear the audience. They couldn't hear both.
It, it's the same thing on the call-in center.
And we, when we put multiple microphones in the room so that everybody could be heard, it developed a feedback problem that we could not solve. So we could go back to a Zoom problem. We will probably go back to exactly the original problems that we had. So, we could go back to a Zoom problem, we will probably go back to exactly the original problems that we had. Um, as far as the system goes, you know, really, there's multiple parts of calling in. One is this, this box. The second is this box is not connected to a service. So, we subscribe to a service. We can subscribe to a different service if we want to and use the same equipment. In fact, we used to use GCI until they stopped doing teleconferences, and then we moved to this system, right? We can move to another system, but the problem with that even is that the third problem is, is that everybody's phones are different. And so, I don't know what you were doing that may or may not have caused some interruptions. And the fourth problem is that most of the time when council members call in, it's by cellphone. And I, I had a meeting where a department manager called my cellphone from her cellphone yesterday to participate, and in a forty-minute meeting, she dropped off twice.
Oh, here?
Yeah. And so, even if you solve every other problem with the teleconference, somebody using a cellphone, cellphone, or, or even the landline here, the quality drops people off. I, I say all of that to say, I don't know how to figure out exactly which is the problem. And we can start replacing things like the teleconference box, we can go back to Zoom, which had mixed reactions from the public, and it had its own problems.
You guys were here for Zoom? Hey, we got like twenty prescribers on YouTube, we can't let them stay down.
You guys don't remember when they posted on Facebook? That was for fun, to read.
It's not as simple as saying that this machine is, is malfunctioning, or that the service that we use is malfunctioning. I, I don't know, I, I don't know what the right answer is.
I think, I think for, if, if, if this one's up to the mayor, too, if we could, if, if the person who's in the galley who has a comment, when you're on the phone, you can't hear them at all. If they could please come to the podium, if they could, that would probably be about the easiest thing. You know, and a lot of people don't like the podium, but when you're on the call center, you can't hear, you can't hear anybody back here.
And that's good feedback, I mean, because, because a lot of times, we're do, when we're doing this, you know, public speaking, we're not taking into consideration the council members who are on, who are on the call. I ne- never took that into consideration before, for having people come up here and speak into the mic. Um, so absolutely, if we have council members that are gone, and, and they can't hear what the public comment is saying, I, I could totally require them to come up here and speak into the mic, so, so you could hear wha- what they're saying.
I was fortunate, when I was gone, I was also visually watching it. You know, but if, if you don't have the time or means, the connection, you're not gonna be able to do that.
And that's can be troublesome, too, for two reasons. One is this time lag.
Yeah.
Because there is a time lag between the YouTube and the, and the phone call. And the second problem is, is depending on where your phone is compared to your computer that you're watching the YouTube on, you create a feedback loop that the only way we can solve is to hang up on you. So, there, it's a, it's a complicated.
Okay.
Problem. Um, we can, we can look at a different, uh, teleconference provider.
I think everyone gets a fair share to call in next year.
I'm gonna call in, that's weird. I mean, we can look at going back and seeing.
Yeah.
A different machine.
Zoom wasn't working either.
But, but everything, I mean, we, we tried to make it, so, and there's other things, too, right? So, like, the conference, the teleconference provider that we have, and the GCI, we are looking for a provider that we pay for, not the callers.
Oh, correct.
Right? So, it's a toll-free call to call in. But about ninety percent of the teleconference providers charge the people who call in for their long-distance phone call. Right? And so, we want to avoid that, that eliminate, I mean, anyway, there's, there are a number of criteria that we're trying to meet.
Okay, well, I'm gonna opt out until someone else gets the enjoyment of calling in.
Feel free to call in.
And I think they're our problem, our.
I tried when I was in Vegas, and I tried to watch it on the screen, and then, or, I don't even remember what it was, and I just ended up with so many issues, and I couldn't hear.
Our guys just texted that we've been trying to be on the phone tonight, it's dropping to four times. Now, now, whether that's a cellphone, or the provider, or the machine, that, that gets back to, I'm not sure how to fix it.
It was frustrating, I finally just like, whatever, I can't handle this.
So, we continue to look at it, but I, I don't know.
I was on the phone three hours.
There, there was a second part.
They were probably done.
We don't think there's anything, but we don't pay for this, do we? And then, and then there was a second part of this, um, talking about, um, the rules of basically, if we have council members on, on a call, it's a hundred percent roll-call vote. Um, is, 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 uh, is, is part of it as well. And then, the number of amount of times you're allowed to call in. Um, you're, you're, you're still allowed to call in, but it takes a vote from the council after four excused absences, right? Um, and, and then the council will vote on, um, be, you know, the meeting to have, to have you participate on the call-in every time after the fourth time that year, that you're, is that the way it votes, Brian?
Yes, that's correct.
I, and I like all these, these are good.
And these are in the existing code, I, I don't know that I'd ever read that section of code. Until I was researching to, to write this up, I said, well, I'll take a look at the teleconference requirements anyway, so.
Mike?
Yeah, though, I do agree with all the, uh, updates here, or bringing attention to these things. Maybe there's a better way to put it.
I like that way, that's, but.
Yeah. I do have a question on the last bullet point here. Where council members or the mayor who wish to attend by teleconference is supposed to notify the clerk by four P M. on Friday for the regular Thursday meeting? The question I have with that is, you know, that, there should be, to me, it would seem like there should be a little bit of flexibility in that, because sometimes, you know, emergency situations with family or medical come up, and I, that seems like a definitive.
Or you're just sick at home, and what, but like, you don't wanna get somebody sick.
I could see, say, by Tuesday or Wednesday, you need to say, hey, you know, I don't think I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna call in or something, but Friday and before, there's, all kinds of things can happen in that time frame that would, you know.
Mary and I can work on some recommended language for the council directors, but this is the way the code reads.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning it.
The code was written before COVID. So, now, you know, we were, we were trained if you're sick, stay home, um, and attend off of a Zoom meeting. You can't, you can't forget your training. Right?
And, and a part of it, there is actually, uh, a section of Title twenty-nine related to teleconference attendance of council and, um, and, uh, assembly meetings. And I think most of this language is drawn directly. I think that it, most of it's drawn directly from Title twenty-nine, so we'll have to do that research as well.
Yeah.
But we can certainly, uh, if, if there's room in state law, we can certainly, uh, start processing an ordinance change that would allow, you know, the council to vote to make an exception to the notice rule or something on each occasion.
I guess the state law probably changed somewhere from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Why'd it have to, I don't know, that's the one. And I can't even remember when we adopted this.
I know it was before COVID, because I've got some council members on here who've been here for forty years, and this is the first time this has been brought up, so it's like. But, no.
Okay. And we'll look at, and we'll look at options for the teleconference system, I just, I, I don't, it's been a frustrating, this whole teleconference and Zoom thing has been an ongoing frustration. Every time we think we have a solution, we cause three new problems.
The cool thing is Teams, you can't have a platform more than a year or two without them coming out with.
I just wanna go back to just broadcasting on the Facebook.
Those were entertaining comments.
Those were entertaining days.
I already know what everybody thinks about.
Well, I learned some new stuff.
Any more, uh, discussed on teleconference participation? All right, moving on to jail capital improvement.
This money that's already been given to the city, it's, it's strictly for jail use. Before we can spend it, we need to appropriate it.
Move to appropriate eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents from the general fund to the police department specifically for physical year twenty-four jail. Capital improvements as specified above.
Second.
Open for discussion? Move them? Roll-call vote?
Kayla Fessman, yes. Sean Thomas, yes. Beth Bennett?
Yes.
Michael Kepis?
Yes.
Sean McKimmy?
Yes.
House passes, all yeses. Council comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian? What, I know you put out a notice to the other communities in the island and find somebody interested in maybe carrying on PAC Act leadership, did you get a response on that, or?
I haven't, I'm gonna try and schedule a meeting next Tuesday regardless, but I've not had anybody step forward.
Could you, next Tuesday is, uh, Southeast, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Southeast Conference, is it possible to do it maybe a week later?
I can, yeah.
I, I'd really like to see that keep going, I know it's kind of tapered off the last few years, but sometimes that's really an effective means of indicating island-wide interest.
And I'm trying to keep sending stuff out, so if I get a request and a four D Ls, I do that, but.
I just think it's worth continuing to keep, keep it going, try it.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's very hard, the, the site is, doesn't look like it's been updated, the members.
Probably not. I don't, I think the person who is updating it is not, I think that was Misty. Fitzpatrick was saying there the website.
I had three mayors in the room the other day in Cassan, and it dawned on me for the first time that, you know, just having, you know, elected officials meet, you know, on islands a few times a year can be beneficial to all the communities. You know, it was just the first time I thought of it, I was like, we have PAC Act, we have Four Tribe, we got all this, and none of the cities that, I don't think, from my laws have come together. Um, and you can learn a lot and what's going on in other people's communities, and, you know, there's a lot of issues that we all share, they attack same issues. So, I've been actually thinking about trying to reach out to, to the mayors and see that, maybe be the first ones to facilitate, you know, meet with mayors and see what we can do to.
That's kind of what PAC.
It, it is, but, but there's a lot of communities that, you know, maybe their, maybe their administrator are, you know, are meeting, um, and that a lot of the elected officials aren't really that much involved in. Um, and we don't have the same schedule as our elected officials, because we, a lot of us have day jobs. Um, so being able to sit down and open up a schedule a couple of times a year, um, and discuss, you know, just what we kind of all got going on. And if it was just, you know, the mayor sitting down, it would, it would have to be open to the public, it could be open to the public, and all our councils in, everything would be open to the public, you know, but you'd be able to facilitate it even a lot easier. But it was just, for some reason, it was, it was just funny, because I was meeting on at the app of APNT, and so all of a sudden, there was three of us in the room together, and I was like, hey, this is awkward, but, um, all right.
I'm hoping that somebody will step up, Mike.
Any more council comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion, I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
All of them?
Aye.
Right on, thank you, guys.
Can I leave this looking, guys?
Don't you, see that noise loud, Paul?
We are purely expecting you to call in.
What if they write, what if they write you in? Yeah, yeah, what if you're writing? Yeah.
I'll have to, uh, recite Clyde, you know, I'm. I have to, I'll renew the charger, though I didn't bring it, okay?
I don't know where mine is, so.
Definitely.
Holy gosh, I plugged it through there. Yeah, I turned it on, and I was like, I was like, no way, I'm like, ah.
It's been real fun, guys.
Thank you, man.